Good evening. Welcome to the April 4th, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Henderson lead us with the invocation, so if you would please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this great day that we had to spend together in this meeting that you've given us to consider the city business. We pray that you'll be with us as we contemplate all the issues in front of us. We pray that you'll help us to make the decisions appropriately. We ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. The City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker? Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Here.
Did receive correspondence from Councilman Baker that he would be out of the county this evening, so I will move the resolution to excuse the absence of Councilman Baker at the regular City Council Meeting of April 4th, 2016, due to being out of the city and the county.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we excuse the absence of Councilman Baker at the regular Council Meeting of April 4th, 2016, due to being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda is Certificates of Recognition and Special Presentations. C1 is a legislative update with the presentation from State Representative Martin Howerlich. I would ask State Representative Howerlich to come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you this evening, Mayor and Council?
Great, how are you?
Good, it's good to be here, and I'll try to be brief. There's quite a few things we could talk about, and that way if I have something that I haven't brought up that you want to talk about, you can certainly bring it up and inquire of me about it. And if I don't know the answer right away, I can find out and get back with you. But I do appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, and I want to make note of a couple of good things and really neat things that have happened. We have had some personnel changes in my office. Ray Watts is still certainly in my office. Krista Jones left for another job in state government, but we did have a wonderful candidate who was hired in my office, Amanda Gill, who is a graduate of Troy Athens High School, and she's been with me for about a month now. We brought her back, she was in Florida, and probably the first week she was here, I think we had two snowy events, and so her Florida clothes, she is realizing is probably not quite warm enough for the absolutely balmy weather that we have up here. But it is good to bring her back to represent the 41st District with me. And then we also have Zach, who is an intern in my office. So, we are on a -- the legislature is not in session this week, but certainly the work continues. There's a number of major issues that are certainly facing the state, some of which are being addressed in pieces. And so let's take Detroit Public Schools, for example. The new emergency financial manager down there, retired Judge Rhodes, brought to the attention of the legislature and the governor that they estimated that they had enough money to run the schools in Detroit until April 8th. And while you look at your calendar, that's this week. So, since we are not in session this week, before we left, we wanted to make sure that there was enough money for the City of Detroit Public Schools to continue to operate through the end of the school year. That was $48.1 million that was provided to the Detroit Public Schools from the tobacco settlement money. Combined with that, there is an expansion of the duties of the Financial Review Commission that was set up to oversee the City of Detroit as it exited bankruptcy. The benefit of that is that it gives parents and students in Detroit Public Schools the comfort of knowing that there's more than simply a financial manager who's actually managing the finances of the city. That was necessary in order to kind of get enough people together that would support the money that was needed to get Detroit Public Schools through the end of the year. There's a bigger, more comprehensive package of bills that are kind of being worked on at this moment, right now. They've started in the Senate, I can assure you that the House is going to have some opinions as well, as far as what that's going to entail. I just got a big package that was sent to me from Senator Hanson's office. He wanted to make sure that the legislature, the House side of the legislature was aware of what they were doing in the Senate. These are things that, one way or another, however they're resolved, there needs to be some resolution on this clearly before the end of summer, so that there's some continuity and consistency with Detroit Public Schools. Flint continues to be a major issue, as you can imagine. We've had our third supplemental appropriation. The first supplemental appropriation was last year, in 2015, for $9.4 million to switch over Flint back to Detroit Water. Then we had two other appropriations of about $30 million apiece. This last one dealt with the cost of water service that we're going to be effectively waiving the cost of water service for folks that were on the Flint Water during the period that there was the issue with the lead in the water. Originally, it was intended for the House Oversight Committee to have hearings on the Flint Water Crisis, but a more hybrid plan is actually what has entailed. There's a special committee that was set up, a House and Senate Joint Committee, that has been set up to have hearings on the Flint Water Crisis. They continue. A number of hearings were held last week, some of which were broadcast live on Detroit Television, as well as Flint Television, certainly available online archived as well. And the point of that is to find out, to get to the bottom of what went wrong. The impetus of this is an Auditor General's report, and then they're delving into taking a deeper dive, if you will, with the Auditor General's report being the starting point. This time of the year is budget year, excuse me, budget time of the year, and we have the Governor Snyder, when he came into office, had the accelerated timeframe of adopting a budget by the end of June each year. That continues, that goal is going to be met, but a couple of interesting things that cities, townships, and villages are always concerned about, one of which is revenue sharing. That's still a work in process, and there are a number of different schools of thought. The issue at hand is always whether townships and villages are -- townships in particular should have their share in the revenue sharing, and that clearly impacts us. If there's money that goes to townships, there's less money to go to cities. I would say that a conservative baseline would be, you know, to look at what the funding was for the cities of Troy and Claussen from last year. There are possibilities of either increasing that or decreasing that, depending on how the budget turns out. The budget will most likely include something for Detroit Public Schools. The price tag of that is looking like $75 million a year for 10 years. Whether the legislature fully appropriates that, or whether something in between zero and $75 million is appropriated, is certainly an issue that is a -- it's being discussed, we put it that way. And it's going to result from the more comprehensive discussion that's in the package of bills that we have in the House and the Senate. A couple of cool things with government transparency. We have a 20 bill package that was introduced in the -- excuse me, it's not -- yeah, 20 bill package that was introduced in the House. It's bipartisan, and I have one of those bills, actually that's 12 bill package, dealing with open FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, or the Legislative Open Records Act for the legislature. What that does, both the law, which would be a new act, would deal with the legislature. The legislature has constitutional autonomy, so we can't have FOIA applied to the legislature. So we crafted a new concept, which is identical to FOIA, called the Legislative Open Records Act. The FOIA amendments would actually open the governor or the entire executive branch to the Freedom of Information Act. So in effect, if these bills pass, you would have transparency and openness across the legislative and executive branches of government, from the governor's office to the House and the Senate. What would be exempt, as you can imagine, are constituent cases. You know, we deal with, you know, unemployment cases and things of that nature would still be exempt because of the personal elements of that, similar to if you went and tried to FOIA somebody's unemployment case, you wouldn't be able to get them. So that is pretty exciting. I have another bill, which is actually separate from that package, but that was also introduced at about the same time, which is the -- it would establish a commission to deal with disputes revolving around the Freedom of Information Act. The intent there is to reduce the cost of adjudicating these things. In other words, if we can actually resolve these things, consider it kind of a non-binding arbitration. If we can resolve these things without taking it to court, or if we can resolve it in such a way as the petitioner, as well as the local government or the state government, can resolve it outside of court, that certainly helps to unclog the courts and significantly reduces costs. And that will be, all of those bills, the 12 bill package, as well as my one bill, will be heard in the House Oversight Committee as well. The City Manager and Management brought to my attention a couple of points that I wanted to bring up this evening as well, House Bill 5169, that was introduced by Representative Earl Plesky, and that bill deals with the veterans exemption. Right now, statute has a 100% veterans exemption for property taxes in the state of Michigan, and this bill would actually remove that and instead give folks a -- who have the veterans' disability, disabled veterans will get 100% of the home step property tax credit. Now, I will tell you that it's highly unlikely that this bill is going to move. It would reduce veterans' benefits by $10 million. In other words, the difference between getting 100% of your property taxes abated at the individual level and getting 100% of the home step property tax credit is about $10 million. So, I only bring that up because it was inquired of me and management. Realistically, there's no way this bill is going to get sent to the governor's office. Also, there was a question about smart zones. I know the city's LDFAs renewal or LDFA proposal has been sitting in Lansing for about 15 months, and so we made some inquiries in Michigan Economic Development Commission. And you folks know how I personally feel about the LDFAs. However, you know, LDFAs exist, and the city government has applied to have an LDFA. And so, that being said, I'm here to help to remove any red tape that there might be and certainly stand by, willing to assist, because it's a policy. This policy has been adopted by the legislature, and the city government is trying to enact something, and therefore, in my role as the State Representative, I have to and I want to assist the government as much as I can. So I want to get with my counterpart, Senator Nolenberg, to see what the holdup is. And it's been explained to my office and to me that effectively the MEDC has a pile of these LDFAs that are sitting out there that are waiting to be approved, but they haven't quite figured out the metrics that they want to use to judge them. I think at some point, they're going to need to fish or cut bait. I don't want the City of Troy and other cities to be left waiting to see what the future is going to hold. We need to make some decisions. So, we're willing, or I'm willing, to see what we can do to give some resolution to that. Another question was brought to me, the issue of TIFs and Tax Income Financing Authorities. I will tell you that there are always bills dealing with TIFs in one form or fashion. I think the question is with respect to libraries, and there's a package of bills that passed the Senate and are now heading to the House that would, what they would do is they would exempt from tax capture library mill levies that would otherwise go to TIFs. And so, this is similar to the bills that we had about two years ago, to make sure that the zoo tax and the DIA tax were not captured in TIFs, but all of that money went to those two entities. And I think you're going to see this with special mill levies across the board, and we're dealing with that on a, basically, a situation-by-situation basis. So now, the situation is the situation with libraries. And that applies to, it's my understanding, it would apply to not just library districts, but all library mill levies. So, I could go on and on, but I think it's probably a good opportunity for me to end this and see if there are any questions at the table, and also make a note that on April 22nd, I'm going to have a consumer education event at the, and this is an official State Representative Office event, at Claussen's Hunter Community Center, and that'll start at 11:00, and it'll go until about 1:00 or so. And I also provide lunch at these things. But the Attorney General's Office has what's called the Consumer Education Programs. They used to be called the Senior Brigade. This is the same program, and this is one of many that are offered, and we're happy to host that in Claussen as well. So, without further ado, I shall see if, Mayor, if you or Council or Management have any questions for me.
Thank you, State Representative Howerlich. Any questions from Council? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Hello, Mr. Howerlich, how are you?
Okay.
Good to see you again. So I got a question on the change in the property taxes. First you said veterans, and then you said disabled veterans, so I'm guessing it is disabled veterans. So I'm just curious, who's bright idea was that to try to, who brought that to Florida to try to change those benefits around?
So, yes, it's 100% disabled veteran, and it also applies to widows or widowers of disabled veterans as well. The theory there, and I will tell you, let me reiterate that this bill honestly is not going to go anywhere. You can just imagine, you know, if your intent is to have this much benefits and you create this much benefit, you can't walk that back, which is why if you intended to have this much to begin with, that's what you should have done. So, the idea there, and you can think of somebody who has a lot of money, and they're getting a 100% property tax exemption. The theory there is that really wasn't what we meant, and perhaps that really wasn't meant to impact widows and widowers. But I think when you have someone with a 100% disability, I think it's very difficult to say, "Look, you have it now, you're not going to have it next year." Folks that have smaller properties would actually probably, no, they wouldn't, folks that have smaller properties, it wouldn't make any difference, because their property tax, really small, lower valued properties, it wouldn't make any difference, because the home step property tax benefit would either equal or exceed their property taxes. But the folks that would be impacted by it and would be the folks that live in higher valued areas, and you think about maybe somebody that bought a property, and one of the best examples I can give is if you lived in one of the, what were at one time modest neighborhoods in Birmingham, and through no fault of your own, the property value is quite frankly skyrocketed, and you can still have a modest home, but the property taxes on that are high, not because Birmingham necessarily has higher or low taxes, but because the values around you have raised. So, I guess the idea there was that, you know, maybe people that have very expensive properties shouldn't be getting a 100% exemption, but at the end of the day, I can pretty much take it to the bank, I think most of us can, that this bill's not going to see the light of day. The bill sponsor was promised a hearing, he got a hearing, and that's pretty much the end of it.
Who was that, just out of curiosity?
It was Representative Plesky from the Jackson area. I will tell you, a lot of the school and city folks across the state in general, not with this bill in particular, or not with the Act in particular, but any time that there's an impact to school tax revenue or local revenue that would impact funding for schools and local governments, there are concerns. And so, when the House Fiscal Agency ran the numbers, what they found was that the net decrease in benefit to the veterans would be about $10 million a year.
That's unbelievable.
Thank you. Any other questions from Council? Councilwoman Hoderick?
Thank you for the update, and I appreciate your willingness to go after the red tape that might be holding up our LDFA opportunities. And I'm thinking part of the issue there might be, and correct me if I'm wrong, there were some significant cuts to the MEDC, as I recall, so it may be a case of trying to prioritize, and I'm sure there's limited resources there to sort through what they have to do. Anything that we can do to help you with that dialogue, please let us know if you -- and again, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I got to think that that would have slowed down the process quite a bit, just the reduced resources. So, appreciate you looking into it and making some noise, because we do need it.
It's mine, and certainly more than happy to do so. Two things. One is, I think that the issue is more strategic than necessarily one of staff. You know, there's some decisions that they need to make, and, you know, there's, let's just say, there's more of an interest in establishing LDFAs across the state. And so, to their credit, what they're trying to do is to have consistency with how they apply their policies statewide, and I think what, it's my understanding, is that they're trying to redo how they look at these LDFAs, and a lot of that just takes a lot of soliciting input. The concern that I had, and quite frankly, I wasn't aware of how long it was taking Troy's to get approved, so it's good to know that, and I certainly stand by, ready to roll up my sleeves and more than happy to approach Senator Nolenberg and ask him to do the same thing, and I'm sure he would be more than happy to do so. But again, this applies to more than just Troy, and I think that, you know, we need to have whatever policies in place so that communities, not just Troy, have a quicker turnaround time than, you know, 15 months in waiting. So, and likewise, if there's something that Troy needs to do, you guys need to get that feedback from the state as well. And so, I think a little poking and prodding may actually go a long way in this case, and so that's why I want to get Senator Nolenberg involved too, and maybe some of the other legislators from the other communities. Not to make things difficult, but just to see if there's something legislatively perhaps that MEDC needs, or at the very least, you know, encourage them to move along here.
Yes. Any other questions, comments, staff?
Thanks, Martin. Also, I just want to say thank you also for your, I think you were co-sponsor in the adverse possession legislation, Public Act 52, I believe. Thank you for your support there in getting that passed. We got an email from City Attorney Bloom telling us that you had an integral part in that, getting that done, so thanks, thanks from us for doing that for us, too.
You're very welcome. It certainly makes, made a lot of sense, and I was a bit surprised that there was a little bit of opposition out there in certain quarters of the state. Not a lot, but, you know, if the property doesn't belong to you, you shouldn't have it, as far as I'm concerned, and that's really what the issue was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, pretty simple.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is C2, a presentation of the Avondale Youth Assistant Annual Report, and I would like to ask Board Chairman Michael Kazak to come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. First of all, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to come up here and chat with you for just a couple of minutes, but I'd also like to extend a thank you to Chief Mayor from the Police Department, as we know that his budget is part of our sponsorship where our funding comes from, so we appreciate his support as well. Couple of things I just wanted to bring to your attention as we look at the annual report. First of all, if you counted up all the numbers, over 50, or 500 families have been helped in the last year through our opportunities and the way we've done things. Also, we've had 1,500, over 1,500 hours of volunteer hours that through the students, the staff, and through the community has given us to volunteer. And then the biggest one that we really part of is the fact that we've had over $12,000 in in-kind donations to actually help bring our budget in to keep it in a fiscal responsibility way, so we're grateful for all of that. The other thing is, is two weeks ago, I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Abraham. Two weeks ago, we had our annual, or our 49th Annual Youth Recognition. We recognized over 114 kids at that event, and it was absolutely wonderful to have somebody from the City of Troy to represent that. So, that's really all I want to say. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, I just wanted to come here in person and just say thank you for all the support that you guys have given us, as well as the chief has given us over the years.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do for our community, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no carryover items this evening. Our public hearings, I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy Residents and Businesses. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I1 is Board and Committee Appointments. There are no mayoral or City Council Appointments this evening. So I will move to I2, which is Board and Committee Nominations. I have two nominations that I would like, to be clerked.
I1B is actually the confirmation of the Civil Service Commission.
Yes, I forgot. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Pennington if he wishes to move that item forward. That's an appointment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I would like to move I1B, the Civil Service Commission Appointment of Donald McGinnis.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we nominate Donald McGinnis for the civil service, or we appoint Donald McGinnis for the Civil Service Commission, which is Act 78, for the term that expires 4/30/2022. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes, and thank you to Donald McGinnis for all of his years of service. I think he's been our representative for at least almost 30 years. Great part of our community. We will move to I2 now, Board and Committee Nominations, and I would like to place into I would like to place into nominations Steve Gottlieb for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term that expires 4/30 of 2019. Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we appoint Steve Gottlieb, nominate Steve Gottlieb to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term that expires 4/30/2019. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. I would like to nominate for the Downtown Development Authority, term that expires 9/30/2017, I would like to place into nomination Kenny Coza. Mr. Coza is the president of Group 10 that owns the two new hotels on Big Beaver next to I-75, as well as the Plaza out front with Carrabas and Bonefish and other restaurants. I just think they should have a voice in the DDA at this point, so that's why I'm placing them in the nomination.
Second.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we nominate for the Downtown Development Authority Kenny Coza for the term that expires 9/30/2017. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Coza will have his application in by next council meeting for you to review. Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, do you have any nominations this evening?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mayor. For the Charter Revision Committee, I have two nominations for the term expiring 4/30 For the Charter Revision Committee, I have two nominations for the term expiring 4/30/2019. Two names to move forward, Robert Burke and Shirley Canosa.
Is that it, or did you want to?
Well, yeah, I got one more. So for the Zoning Board of Appeals, for the term also ending 4/30/19, David Eisenbacher. And that is the last name.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate for the Charter Revision Committee, Mr. Burke, and is it Mr. Canosa?
Ms.
Ms. Canosa?
Yes.
And for the Zoning Board of Appeals, David Eisenbacher. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
And for the Zoning Board of Appeals, David Eisenbacher. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon? Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We're still looking for many qualified applicants, please.
Various committees.
Next is I-3. There is no closed session requested this evening, so we will move to I-4, which is the establishment of Global Troy Advisory Committee. And I see Eleanor Yun, our management assistant, is coming forward. Good evening, Eleanor.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So on March 14, 2016, I gave a presentation introducing Global Troy to City Council, and as the next step, today's resolution is presented to you for your consideration. Global Troy is an initiative to create a culturally competent community with the establishment of the Global Troy Advisory Committee. The committee will help City Council and staff create a more connected, inclusive community, and will serve as a valuable resource. So the proposed makeup of the committee is listed in detail in the resolution, but to briefly explain, the committee would consist of 11 Troy residents appointed by the mayor with City Council approval. Included within the 11 members would be one City Council member, whose term will coincide with the City Council term. The other 10 members for the initial appointment will serve terms of different length, from one year to three years, so that the terms will be staggered, and all subsequent appointments to the committee, except for the City Council member, will be for three-year terms. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor. Any questions from council on the resolution or the presentation? I think your presentation was so good that there possibly couldn't be any questions, I'm sure. Thanks for all your help, Eleanor, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I will move I-4, the establishment of the Global Troy Advisory Committee, as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we move the establishment of the Global Troy Advisory Committee. Any further discussion this evening? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. I look forward to this committee, and I think it'd be appropriate to announce this evening that we will be taking applications immediately for those that want to serve on this committee. And I would encourage them to get their applications in to the city clerk's office, so we can get this going as soon as possible. And once again, I want to thank Eleanor for all of her help on this and city staff. Thank you. Next on the agenda is I-5, an application to delist 3645 Crooks Road. I see Brent Savadant moving forward, the planning director. Good evening, Brent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I've never made a presentation with so many people in uniform seated and standing behind me, so I feel somewhat nervous, but very, very safe. So we have before us an item, an application to delist a historic property. Chapter 13 of the City Court of Ordinances is our Historic Preservation Ordinance, and that's the document that regulates historic properties in the city. And it includes a list of all of our historically designated properties, and it provides a process for which we either add properties to the list or remove properties from the list. When you take a property from the list, it's called a delisting. So as part of the process, there's a requirement that City Council, if they make an action, it's through an ordinance. And you'll notice the agenda item that was distributed on Friday, there was a resolution, but there was no ordinance. Excuse me. That ordinance was emailed to you this afternoon, and a hard copy was distributed to you in front of you this evening. That oversight was mine, mine alone, so I apologize for the confusion. But the only change, substantive change to that ordinance proposed is striking 3645 from the list of properties. I just want to clarify that. It's four pages long, but that's really the only significant change. So the property that we're talking about is 3645 Crooks. It's located on the west side of Crooks, south of Waddles. And you see, it's just south of the entrance to Boland Park, on the west, again, on the west side of Crooks. This is a photograph of the front of the house, and this is the rear of the house. There's been a lot of additions over time to the rear of the house, but basically, it's known as, in a lot of the documentation we have, it's referred to as the Crooks House. It was built in 1853. It's of the Greek Revival style, which includes a low-pitched side gable roof, entablature surrounding the front door, which is another way of saying it's kind of a stately, dramatic front door, and banded window frames. And this is, I overlaid the zoning map on this property. Notice the zoning of this property. It's single, one-family residential, and it's been one-family residential since the time we had zoning in 1955. The next slide shows property ownership. We know that it was converted to an office use sometime prior to 1983. We're not sure exactly when. But when it was an office, the status was a legal non-conforming use. Although it was an office use, it was in a residential district. So that use was allowed to continue until such time that it was discontinued. The city purchased the property in 2006, and it was used, still as an office. It was an engineering field office. In 2015, we had a surplus property sale, and we sold it as a residential property. And the bid documents clearly laid it out as being residentially zoned, as well as historic. The highest bidder in the auction was the Crystal Group, and the Crystal Group is the applicant that has submitted an application to delist. There are three standards of delisting that are in chapter 13. The first is that the historic district has lost those physical characteristics that enabled establishment of the district. The second is that the historic district was not significant in the way previously defined, and finally, the historic district was established pursuant to defective procedures. So there needs to be a finding that at least one of these standards was met. So some points to consider. I tried to find an image of Riley Crooks, and there was no Instagram back in 1822. And I tried the library, and I had no luck. So the best I could do for an image was this plaque, which is located about half a mile from us, where we are now, on Livers, just south of Waddles. And a little bit about Riley Crooks. Originally from New York, settled an 80-acre piece of property over by Boland in 1822, and he was elected the first township clerk in 1827. Very important person for, in terms of the history of Troy. According to the documents, the first township meetings were held in the hayloft of a barn. We're not sure if that barn was on that 80 acres or not. He died in 1830. He was chopping a tree, and a branch fell on him. The point of this is, the house was constructed in 1853, 23 years after Mr. Crooks passed away. And the barn, if it was on the property, no longer exists. So the feeling of the Historic District Study Committee was, it's probably called the Crooks House based on the fact that he owned the property, not because he lived in the house. There have been a number of exterior renovations to the property since the time it was constructed in 1853. On the screen is a list. There's vinyl siding, metal trim, asphalt shingles, aluminum gutters, metal storm door, final replacement windows, and the foundation that's made out of mortar and stone was repaired using concrete blocks. So the Historic District Study Committee felt that this diminished the historic character of the property. And because it was completed prior to being delisted, that it was actually listed somewhat in error. In your packet, there was a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office, they disagree with the Historic District Study Committee. They feel that the application does not meet one of the standards on the list. The Historic District Study Committee disagrees. They support the delisting 3 to 0, and the Planning Commission support the delisting by a vote of 8 to 1. All of those boards and bodies are recommending bodies. The ultimate authority for removing a property from the list of chapter 13 is my City Council. My final slide are, again, the standards for delisting, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions from council for Mr. Savadant? Thank you. I think you answered most of my questions this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody like to move the resolution for discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I-5 as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we move the application to delist 3645 Crooks Road as printed. Discussion? Councilman Henderson?
If I may, I'll vote in favor of this. I think, you know, everybody likes to preserve old homes, but, you know, just looking at the photographs and the location, it's surrounded by current residential. If you look at the photographs of the interior of the building, there's a lot of drop ceilings. It doesn't, going into it, it doesn't have the characteristics of some of the older homes that you would anticipate having on a historic listing. Planning Commission voted 8 to 1 in favor. The Study Commission that we appointed voted 3 to 0 in favor of delisting. And I guess, the only question I have is, was the purchase made contingent on delisting? Was that the intent of, did that come into play at all?
City Attorney Bloom?
I can address that. We could never do that, because obviously, it's up to council to decide whether or not it's going to be delisted. So we would never ever be able to make an offer, a purchase, for contingent on that condition.
The only?
I would just also, though, say that they were aware, though, that it was a historic resource. Also, we do have it in the chain of title. It is clearly established, so.
Okay, so they came into it fully aware, but, you know, I have to imagine, somebody buying that property, if they were to, if their intent was to restore it to historic appearance, that's a lot of money that somebody's going to have to invest to try to demodernize it and make it historic. If their intent is to raise the building and build something more appropriate there for the conditions, you know, I can understand why somebody would want to do that. So, again, I'm in favor of this.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I agree with Councilman Henderson. Delisting, I think it's a good call. You said it was a Greek structure, you know, Greek design, you know, back in 1800s when it was built. When I think of Greek style, I don't think of vinyl siding, so, I mean, I think it's a good call to delist it.
Councilwoman Abraham?
This seems to me very similar to something that this council looked at. I think it was a couple of months ago, was also delisting another property, and it seems that the historical committee had also determined, or at least questioned, why it was ever listed in the first place. And this seems very similar. So consistent with that vote, I would also be voting to support this.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. There was a memo on that, you know. I wasn't aware of that, but any other discussions? You know, I struggled with this personally. I, as of 3 o'clock this afternoon, I was going to vote no, because I don't think the three, at that time, didn't think the three standards had been met. And I kind of concur with the state's letter. And it really doesn't have anything to do with the houses around it. It doesn't have anything to do with the inside of the building at all. But I decided I'd take a look at it from the totality of it, and I really don't think it ever should have been on the list. I don't think it met the standard in 1978. And I don't think that we can find somebody that can answer the question why it was put on in 1978. So I am going to, I am going to vote yes tonight, because I don't think it should have been on there in the first place. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-6 is a resolution to approve the Volunteer Firefighter Incentive Plan and Trust, and to transfer available funding to the trust. And we will have an introduction by Tom Darling, the Director of Financial Services. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. As you can see from the audience, this may be more popular than my annual audit presentation in detail, so go ahead and...
It's a slam dunk.
As you know, since 1970, the city's had an incentive plan for our volunteers to attract and retain and recognize their significant contributions to the city. Back in 2013, a committee was established, really, to address a couple of concerns of the volunteers and some concerns of management. And these were really in the area of providing security to the incentive benefits earned by the volunteers, and the ability to invest the incentive plan reserves in a platform that's more similar to our other retirement systems, if you will. The committee included our city manager, Kishnik, City Attorney Bloom, along with Chief Nelson, and subsequently, Chief Roberts, along with representatives from each of the six fire stations, including Jason Dalbec, Scott Stoglin, Al Serrano, Tony Pabian, Jim Row, and Pete Hollinger, along with myself. We engaged Michael Van Overbeek as special counsel to develop an incentive plan and trust that would address the committee's concerns and meet the goals of the plan, and Michael has joined us tonight to answer any questions that you may have. In August of 2014, the committee, the volunteers and the city council adopted an incentive plan and a revocable trust. However, as part of the approval, and due to the uniqueness of this plan, both the volunteers and city council requested that the trust and plan be sent to the IRS for their review and address maybe any unforeseen tax consequences to the volunteers or to Other less significant changes address situations where a deferred member of the system subsequently came back to active duty and how those years of service and multipliers were, are used. And again, this plan and trust has been reviewed and approved by both the committee members, the volunteers, and the volunteers of all six fire stations. If you have any questions, we do have Michael Van Overbeek here to answer any of those more technical questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from Council? We did say that the volunteers are in support of this, correct?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I-6 as printed.
Support.
We're moving the resolution on the table, correct?
Yes.
With the correction?
Yes.
Did you second that?
Yes.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Protem Pennington, that we approve I-6 as printed on the yellow sheet document that was on the table this evening. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I just wanted to say, this is such a positive step to me. It's been long in coming. I appreciate the hard work that went into all the nuances of developing this, all the dialogue that had to have gone on at the stations, as everybody worked together to think it through. And, you know, we try to do government best here in Troy, and that's what it takes. And I really appreciate that, on top of the training, the firefighting, the safety and security that you bring the community. I appreciate the work that went into patiently and in detail working this through so we could establish it. It's very good stuff, and it's appreciated.
Any other comments from Council? Mayor Protem Pennington?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, we always talk about the Police Department. They get a lot of accolades, and it is well deserved, but, you know, it's good to talk about our fire employees every once in a while, and I know many of them, and they are a fantastic lot also, and we appreciate every one of them.
That's for sure. I don't think, I can't, I don't want to speak for everyone up here, but I don't think Council would pass this unless we heard that the volunteers were in 100% support of doing this. So, when I heard that, it was a no-brainer for me. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks to the volunteers for your service to our city. City Manager Kishnik?
Thank you, Mayor. To echo some of the comments that were made, having, I think it was my first week on the job when we had our first meeting with the station representatives on this issue, which I did not understand, not to mention the multiplier changes that were discussed. So, two issues were on the table. And if the station reps, I see just a few of them, could you guys please stand and just tell us, and I know there's, Soriano, I see you here. All right, so, so three out of six, and these people and the other three, Pete Hollinger, help me out, guys.
Jason.
Oh, how could you forget Jason? And then the attorney.
Jim Roll.
Right, so.
And Jim Roll.
Jim Roll, yeah. So, they have spent countless hours listening to actuaries, listening to a very, very credible, well-respected Mike Van Overbeek, who is working with the city of Detroit as well, through countless hours trying to get this done, and Mike and Lori, or Tom and Lori. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody in getting it back to their stations, and then coming back, and then going back. This is, this was a very detailed and long process that took a lot of people. And this is, this is a great day that this is done, and behind us, and hopefully, you know, everybody's going to benefit. The city's going to benefit, the stations and the members of the Police Department, I mean Fire Department, thank you, are going to, are going to benefit and safeguard this plan and help us keep it solvent so that these people who give so much time, you know, my pager doesn't go off in the middle of the night, and theirs does. And it's a really, really good situation that we're moving forward. I just want to say that.
Thank you. There's at least 20 volunteers here this evening for support of this. So, thanks for coming tonight. Hope we didn't bore you too much. Thanks again for your service. I-7 is our next item, the Standard Purchasing Resolution 8, which is the Best Value Award for the Construction Manager at Risk Services for Fire Station 4. I see Chief, Fire Chief Roberts is at the podium. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. As you may recall, the city's in the process of planning for a new fire station, number four, to replace the existing fire station located on Maple Road east of John R. On December 7th of 2015, City Council approved a contract to provide architectural and engineering services for Fire Station number four to Redstone Architects Incorporated of Bloomfield Hills in the amount of $201,042. The next step in the process was to conduct a request for proposal to hire a construction manager at risk.
The purchasing department facilitated a comprehensive request for proposal process. Five city staff members served on the committee to review and evaluate the proposals. The top three firms were interviewed by the evaluation committee. Based on the scoring criteria and reference checks, the committee unanimously recommends the contract to the highest-rated proposer, The Daily Company. The Daily Company is a recognized leader in construction management specializing in fire stations and municipal projects. The project team has over 27 years of experience. So, it is recommended to award a contract to perform the construction manager at risk services for Fire Station number four to The Daily Company of Lake Orion, Michigan, for a total not to exceed amount of $540,000, $540,990.
And lastly, the next step will be to meet with both Daily and Redstone in order to further the design process for the fire station and revise the estimated timeline and project completion.
I didn't mean to neglect that Mary Beth Mers was here, our purchasing manager, and Steve Palata, the Director of Building Operations. So, they're here to answer questions from Council. Is there any questions from Council? Councilman Campbell?
I move the resolution for approval as written.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve I-7, the Standard Purchasing Resolution 8 as printed in the agenda packet. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Next is the consent agenda. Has anyone wished to pull a consent agenda item this evening? If not, Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on a consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the packet. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none on the agenda this evening. So, we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will call on Francis Plisga, Troy resident.
Excellent. Close was fine. Thank you very much.
Is it close?
It was right on the money.
Oh.
Usually, people botch a little bit. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Francis Plisga, Frank Plisga. Cindy Stewart has a few passouts that I would like to have you read, if you would be so kind to do so, please, at your leisure. No doubt, you're busy people. I know you worked long, hard hours, and it's the end of a long day, so. Mayor, members of Council, General Counsel, City Manager, I already said it, my name is Francis Plisga. My wife, Beatrice, and my son, Jeff, and my daughter, Linda, moved into Troy in 1978 at 5152 Orchard Crest Drive. And my wife, myself, and my sons still live there, still reside there. We find Troy has been and still is a beautiful, diverse, safe, and wonderful place to live. I was a member of the cop citizens on patrol for a few years, and I went on patrol, but when I patrolled, I really didn't see anything to report. I had one incident, but it didn't develop into anything, so that was very fortunate for the young lady who I thought was being followed by somebody I didn't recognize in the neighborhood. So, after a few years, I saw nothing, and so I retired, or they let me go, or whatever. And I still keep my eyes open, though, when I'm up and about and around town, because being retired, I have some time to go out and do shopping and whatever, all else. I'm kind of nosy, unobtrusively, but still trying to be kind of nosy, primarily due to the training I received. So, I thank the chief and his staff for that, particularly the big dogs they had. They were scary. I'm a retiree of the Detroit Edison Company, and have a number of friends retired from there as well, also living in Troy. Jim Siereluski, you may have heard his name, Jim Connolly, Peggy Seifert, Fred McKinney, and others. And there was a guy I knew years and years ago. His name was Bob Tewksbury. Somebody at work told me that one time he was a mayor of the city, but I tried to find out through the library and through the Historical Society whether he was or wasn't out, and they couldn't find anything. I apologize because Cindy told me I had three minutes, and I brought that, but I'm a little late, so. Okay, I'll be quick.
Do you have a bug?
I didn't, I didn't realize that. I'm sorry. I'm here tonight to introduce you, and hopefully others as well, to a relatively unknown and totally misunderstood disease called myalgia encephalomyelitis. It's an illness that's characterized by years of severe... Do I have to stop? Can I have one minute, please?
I'm going to, if you'll just bear with me for a minute. I'm going to ask Council to waive the rules and allow Mr. Plisga to finish his...
A couple minutes.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Mayor Protem Pennington, that we suspend the rules and allow Mr. Plisga to complete his discussion. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
We don't normally do that, but we're going to allow that tonight, so.
Thank you all very much.
If you could just give us one or two more minutes.
I will.
Thank you.
There's no known cause, no primary therapy, and no treatment. I'm attempting to create awareness on this horrible disease to the best of my ability, which doesn't seem too good right now, and hopefully encourage others to do likewise. In that regard, May has been designated as an ME Awareness Month. In concert with that, I'm trying to hold an E, ME Awareness Walk in front of Troy Beaumont Hospital the week of May 9th. And I've contacted everybody I could think of at the Troy City, including your office, including the Police Department, including Public Affairs. I contacted everybody I could think of at Troy Beaumont Hospital. They told me that their management is fully apprised of what I'm attempting to do. And so, it's, it's an awareness, not a fundraiser, not a protest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plisga.
Sorry.
We'll do what we can. I'm sure Cindy Stewart, our...
Yeah, she's got the passouts.
She'll, maybe we can get that on our webpage? Thank you, sir. There are no Council referrals this evening, so we will move to public or Council comments. Any Council comments this evening?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I just wanted to draw everyone's attention, get on your calendar, the Troy People Concerned Annual Spring Pasta Dinner on Wednesday, April 13th. It's a great excuse to not have to cook, and it's a fun event to go to at the San Marino Club. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. San Marino Club is right on Big Beaver here in Troy. Open buffet, cash bar, 50/50 raffle, silent auction, fun for the children, face painting and magic show. Tickets are $20 for adults and $5 per child under 10. For information, you can contact Troy People Concerned. They do have a website, troypeopleconcern.org. Phone number is (248) 528-9199. Troy People Concerned is one of our great organizations in the city, and this is an opportunity to come surround that, support those folks that do that work, and really have a great meal and a great time at the same time.
Thank you. Any other Council comments this evening? Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just want to thank our IT departments. We now have a little button that we can click on, and we can follow the feed instead of turning around or craning our necks on just a little thing, but they don't usually get too much praise, so I want to say thanks.
Thank you from me, too. Any other comments from Council? Next are reports. Is there any comment from Council regarding the reports in the packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening, so thank you for coming tonight. We are adjourned.